Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 24th, 2020 School Committee Meeting. Thank you all for joining us. Lots of guests on Zoom this evening. If you are not a school committee member or a superintendent, assistant superintendent, or I guess that's it, please stop your video until it is time for either your presentation or if you're here for public comment, that would be great. It just helps us organize the votes a little bit better. Also, if you keep yourself on mute and actually while we do, we're going to move into the pledge in a minute. If everyone can mute except for me, we're going to try and actually get this right this time so it doesn't sound a little bit all over the place on WCTV. So again, if you could stop your video if you're not presenting right now, except for school committee members and superintendents, and please keep yourself on mute. Tristan, it looks like everybody is here. So please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Each year following our town election, which was just this past Saturday, the school committee reorganizes. Tonight, we will elect our chair, vice chair, and secretary. This one-year term will begin this evening. We will begin with nominations and a vote. Are there any nominations for chair? Mrs. Burns?
I would like to nominate Jen Bryson for chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for chair? Okay. So that is a brings us to a vote. If you, this is very odd because it's me, so that's strange. But if you are in favor of electing Jen Bryson as your chair for the next year, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Are there any nominations for vice chair? Mr. Bjork?
Yes, I'd like to nominate David Ragsdale.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Do we have to ask him if he'll do it? Or is that just?
I suppose we should.
I think he said yes, although he's muted. So we'll just take that as a yes and we'll keep going. Do you want to unmute?
Yes, I'll do that.
Okay. Any other nominations for vice chair? Did I ask that already? No other nominations. We'll take a vote. Please raise your hand if you. Thank you. That is, are you voting, David, or no?
Okay, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, then I can say it's unanimous. Otherwise, I have to say there's one abstention, so.
Okay.
All right.
Or perhaps he's opposed.
Oh, too late now. Thank you, David. Are there any nominations for secretary? Mr. Bjork?
I will nominate MJ Burns.
MJ Burns, you can't get away from this. Are there any other nominations for secretary? MJ, are you okay with being nominated? I'm not even sure how many years in a row this is, so. I don't know. We'll have to go back and look. All right, if you are in favor of MJ Burns as secretary for the next year, please raise your hand. Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you so much. And I think that is it. Congratulations to our newly elected officers. Thank you all for your service. And we shall move on to the approval of minutes of June 10th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. We have item B is acceptance of anonymous donation to Wilmington Public Schools Library Programs in the amount of $500. And I'm just going to read that, if that's okay. Wilmington Public Schools received a letter from donors who wish to remain anonymous, providing a donation of $500 to the Wilmington Public Schools Library Programs. The donors request that the funds be used to select and purchase age-appropriate materials which focus on the history of civil rights in the United States, promote the understanding of the diverse cultures represented in our community. The donors hope that the donation will complement Wilmington Public Schools' efforts to educate students on historic racial and social inequities and encourage them to work to build a just and tolerant society. There is a motion here, move to accept the anonymous donation in the amount of $500. Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very, very much to our anonymous donor. We really are deeply appreciative. And what a fantastic, yeah, I'm sorry, MJ Burns?
My apologies for interrupting. Are we going to reorg this? Do the subcommittees, were you planning on carrying that forth at the end of the meeting?
So at the end of the meeting, we're actually not going to reorg them tonight. We're going to have people think about which ones for the next meeting.
Great, thank you so much.
Through them to at the end of the meeting. We'll go through each of those. And then if anyone has something to say about them in particular, and then next time, people will come with their ideas about which subcommittees they'd like to serve on.
Very good. Thank you so much.
That's okay. No, thank you. All right. Any other comments about the donation? Okay. Thank you again. We have warrants G424, R233, R235, FS38, FS39, and L74. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All in favor? That is unanimous. Payroll ending 6/17/2020. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. Sped 25 and 26. Is there a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is one, two, three abstentions. Tristan?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item F, we have the second reading of school committee policies, JFABD, ABE, ABF, and JFBB. This is our second reading. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Bjork, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand?
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. There are two specific items listed under this section. Just to briefly update you on, and they are brief. More information around COVID-19 and just a couple of moments. First off, I just wanted to continue to keep the school committee updated on the progress around the student support services relocation. As you know, we are in the process of relocating that group of important staff from the Wildwood to another location. This emerged, quite frankly, upon my entry to the district very quickly and recognizing that the personnel needs of that group of staff within essentially two classrooms at the Wildwood School was far insufficient on so many levels to meet the needs of that department. After a number of conversations with both the town manager as well as Mr. Hooper, we finalized a relocation for them at the Art Center in Wilmington. And so it's not lost upon me that that led to a domino of other programs that needed to relocate at the town level. I do want to, though, extend my appreciation to both Jeff and George for their partnership in working with Paul and Alice and I on trying to find this new location. George Hooper and his staff have been hard at work over there at the Art Center to try and make some minor modifications, but things have been progressing well. Paul and I were over there earlier this week, and things are readying for the anticipation of a move sometime throughout the summer. So we'll keep you informed on that. But it's certainly long overdue, and it will provide much more adequate space to meet the needs of staff in the student support services, of which all told is approximately 15 personnel. So it's an important group, certainly for the district. Second, summer leadership meetings is item number B. I just thought I would take this opportunity and just provide the committee with a brief update. As you probably know, typically in a given summer, we usually set aside time to come together both as a district leadership team, which includes central office staff and all of our building principals, to plan for the upcoming school year. And then later in the summer, the extended leadership team, which is inclusive of the district leadership team plus a number of other individuals who serve as in leadership capacity through the district. Time has typically been spent, has been carved out to spend to come together to also plan for the upcoming school year. Given the variety of obviously pressing issues before us in terms of school reopening, decided to modify that calendar a little bit this year and change course. And so we have actually a number of days set aside, sort of a hold placed on dates in July, July 14, 15, and then again in August 4th and 5th, and August 18th, 19th, and 20th. And what I've asked people to do is just set those aside. Unfortunately, in an ideal situation, that time would be spent centered around such things as strategic planning and priority planning for the upcoming school year. It's a rare and important opportunity that school and district leaders have in the summer to be planful and thoughtful for the year to come. We will be that for this coming year. But as you might imagine, the anticipation is going to be largely spent around putting in place plans that will comply with the Department of Ed guidance around reopening of schools and preparing for that. So I did just want to give you a brief update on that. And then finally, not list on the memo tonight, but seems like this would be the best opportunity for me to just take a moment and extend to Dr. Regan a couple of words as we prepare to say goodbye to him. This is his last meeting with this group this evening with our school committee. Brian came in two years ago with myself, as you know, during a pretty transitional and important time for the district, and immediately was met with an extensive array of curricular needs and professional development and instructional needs that were left certainly for him, not the least of which was also joining myself to become a part of the new central office team. In a short amount of time, he became an invaluable member of the leadership team, both the central office team as well as the district leadership team. His thoughtful, professional, and relationship-centered approach, along with, of course, his incredible sense of humor, quickly allowed him to become an impactful and important member of our team. And so I just want to take this opportunity as he prepares to move on to his new appointment in Wolfham as the superintendent of schools come next week, actually, July 1st, to extend to him my thanks on behalf of our leadership team for his work, his commitment, his energy, and his time and energy that he has put in these last two years to help make this team better and this district better moving forward. So with that, we wish Brian much success. And that is it for the superintendent's report tonight.
All right. Like, we should clap or something. We clap, yeah. Let's do like a show. Brian, I'm sure that I speak for everyone when we wish you well, and we're sad to see you go, but we're so excited for you and your new opportunity. And we know that, I think, as David said in an earlier subcommittee meeting, certainly an interesting time to become a superintendent. So you always have your friends and your committee members back here if you need to talk to someone and get some extra support. But we will miss you, and we do thank you for your dedication to our town for the past couple of years. Any other comments from the committee?
Just hear here.
Hear here. Yep.
Brian, I'll be watching that extra real estate space once we get back into the media room for our meetings. But I wish you the best of luck in your new placement. And as Jen said, you know, there's always an open door here at Wilmington if you decide that it doesn't work out for you. We don't know where that, where we'll put you, but there's an open door.
Call me at TSC anytime. You know how to find me.
If you come back, we'll put you at the Wildwood.
I just want to thank you all. And I've learned a great deal from everyone I've worked with, committee, leadership team, amazing teachers here in the district. And I've said this to multiple people. I'm leaving earlier than I expected. This was an opportunity that came up that I couldn't pass up. But I'm leaving here a better leader because of my time here and a better educator. And this is truly a special community. And it's nice to know that there's some smiling faces I can always turn to. And I feel like that is sincere based on what I've learned. We've got a long meeting ahead, so I won't go on. But just thank you for your kind words and all your support.
You can't leave, you're not leaving right now, right? You're going to stay on the meeting? No, I'm just kidding. All right. Thank you so much. Our next item of business is public comment. I'm just going to read sort of the overview. At this time, the school committee chair will call each participant's name. As you know, we've been actually asking people to send in public comment a little bit ahead of time just to keep us organized during this remote time. With Zoom, it's a little tricky. So people have been great about filling out that form and sending that in by 5:00 on the day of the meeting. So we thank you. We will call your name in the order of your submission. You'll be unmuted by the school committee recording secretary, Mrs. Dixie, to make your comment. If you're not here, some of you have told us you're not going to be here. And so I've asked Mr. Bjork to read those comments when we come to your name. As a reminder, we ask that comments are no longer than three minutes. And just to remind everyone, we typically don't engage in a dialogue at this time. All right. So thank you very much. And if you are making a public comment at that time, please, obviously, you want to open up your video again so that we can see you. First up, we have Jennifer Fidler.
Thank you. The following is a quote from a WPS teacher who responded to Dr. Brand's recent staff survey. I am very saddened by the tone that this year is ending after a survey that the district sent out to parents. I can assume that the survey will be very confusing for some parents to see because some of the learning expectations were never put in place. This in turn puts criticism on the teachers after all the work we did do on our own with minimal leadership. It was a year no one expected. I hope that going forward, there will be better timely communication and working together with the common goal of teaching and supporting the students and their families. This anonymous member's message captures the sentiment expressed by many of our teachers when we first learned of the district's parent guardian survey. And it was written prior to Dr. Brand's releasing his memo with the survey responses, a memo which did not provide support for the teachers who ultimately received a great deal of criticism within that feedback. For those of you who have not yet seen it, the WTA leadership composed a response to Dr. Brand's memo and posted on our Facebook and Twitter accounts. You can read the full letter there, but we wanted to make sure that the following points were addressed with the community tonight. First, Wilmington teachers had no control over when new learning could take place this spring. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education provided guidance on remote learning, and Wilmington Public Schools chose to follow that guidance in order to safeguard our district's most vulnerable populations. While many Wilmington teachers wanted to move forward with new learning back in March, we respected the guidance and instructions from both the state and district levels. Second, we were all learning to work and teach remotely on the fly. No one anticipated a global pandemic closing our schools, and none of us, administrators included, had been trained in how to run a remote school environment. While this past spring was certainly not business as usual for any of us, we hope to learn from this experience and to prepare for the future accordingly. Third, the Wilmington Teachers Association is making every effort to work collaboratively with the WPS administration and continues to strive for a productive joint labor management relationship. But collaboration is a two-way street. While the WTA offered support to our administration, our regularly scheduled joint labor management meetings were canceled by Dr. Brand. The district preferred to pass documents back and forth via email rather than expedite the process by meeting virtually to discuss compromises. Dr. Brand gave some the impression that the WTA leadership was holding up progress for our district. Yet throughout this process, we were always quick to respond with the intention of providing the best for our members and for our students. Regardless of these experiences, we continue to welcome the opportunity to collaborate with the district administration and hope that Dr. Brand can do the same for us moving forward. And finally, no matter what plan is put in place in the fall, not everyone will be happy. Whether we are back in schools or working remotely, families have legitimate concerns over what learning will look like for their children and for their children's physical and emotional well-being. As our educators, we will continue to advocate for the best and for the safest working conditions for everyone, and we'll use the feedback from the surveys to guide our discussions with the district for the fall. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your consideration of our concerns.
Thank you very much. Steve, next up, I think it's something you're going to read. It's Louis Diannarte.
Yes. Yes, of 2100 Horseshoe Lane.
Thank you.
And high school committee, just a couple of things. One, remote learning didn't work. Both my kids have IEPs, and none of them received the help they needed. My son, my son's kindergarten only met with his teacher once a week, and they draw pictures. His special education teacher met with him twice a month and speech once a month. My daughter had no issues, got her work done. Two, if remote learning starts back up in September, we need it to be worked out better. More time needs to be put into it. Teaching meeting once a week for 30 minutes isn't enough time. Let me restate that last sentence. I think there was a punctuation mark missing. More time needs to be put into it. Teaching meetings once a week for 30 minutes isn't enough time. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
The next, certainly, the next.
Christine Lemieux. And if you aren't here, just let me know. But I'm pretty certain they're not. Christine Lemieux.
27 Forest Street.
Thank you.
No matter whose fault it is, remote learning was completely unsuccessful and should not even be debated for a full school year. By doing so, we would be failing our children and depriving them of a proper education. Going to school is not just about the academics, but also about learning social skills and interacting with other children. If you claim you want to keep our children safe, then schools need to be reopened. According to the CDC data, that age group is not affected by COVID-19. However, the consequences of all the strict guidelines have caused potential long-term damages to a lot of the kids. It's been only four months since the restrictions started, and already seven out of 10 teenagers have openly admitted in a poll that they are struggling with their mental health. It also would not be surprising to hear the same about younger children. What will it be like after a full school year of isolation and remote learning? If you are serious about keeping kids safe, you need to abide by their rights to receive a proper education, and you need to let them be kids. Let them play and talk with other kids. Even better, increase recess time in PE classes, which will create better learners and certainly help with everyone's mental health.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Christine. Next, we have Christian Hoffman.
Also of 24, 27 Forest Street. Children require interactive, structured, engaged, in-person learning to excel in both academics and social learning. Remote learning, or Zoom, was grossly inadequate for all requirements, particularly in the long run, to meet all criteria for proper, expected learning. School-aged children are not a demographic particularly impacted by COVID-19. Parenthesis, see attached CDC stats with a link. And as such, should expect standardized learning that has all served us in the past. This episode should serve to highlight the need for more focused, healthy lifestyle living with increased physical education, recess time, nutrition, et cetera, than from further shielding our children from an affliction that doesn't impact them. Reopen the schools. That's it.
Thank you. And thank you, Christian Hoffman. Thank you, Steve, for reading those. Our last submission for public comment this evening is Ursula Tasto, I believe is here.
Hi, Ursula Tasto, 140 Chestnut Street in Wilmington, Massachusetts. So as we look into this next year, we need to be willing to do things differently and learn quickly from any changes that we make. We need to become what's called a learning organization. A learning organization is one where members are continuously learning and changing. As we all know, this year's been very, very challenging. I'd like to personally thank Dr. Brand for being brave enough to share the survey results of the parent survey. I think that was very useful information. I'd like to encourage the Wilmington Teachers Association, if they're listening, they also did a survey. I'd encourage you to share the raw results so that we can learn from the information that you have collected. Similarly, I hope that any survey that's done for staff is available to those working in the reopening working groups. This is valuable information for everyone to be able to internalize and adapt to. As a learning organization, I would encourage us to use these summer programs as small trials of all the ideas we're looking to implement for the fall, ranging from better remote learning practices to how to manage kids in a classroom where social distancing and/or masks might be needed. It's a small group of children that we can try the best practices that we are seeing from other areas. We should be adopting those best practices that other towns and other communities are doing. As a learning organization, we should plan for additional feedback from parents, students, and staff after a month of school in the fall. So after September, we should look to get that feedback and reevaluate and change quickly if things are not working appropriately. We shouldn't wait for three or four months to pass. We need to keep learning about what is or is not working and adapt. There are divisions about returning to school. I don't envy all of us the challenges of getting us, our children educated and closing those divisions. We should be considering, where possible, to provide choice so that people that have health issues or other challenges have choices available to them. Toward that end, there are discussions about people wanting to homeschool. Homeschooling is an interesting and not typical schooling style. Personally, I want my children back in the classroom. But for those that are interested in homeschooling, I think we should provide information sessions so that if there are children that have proper support at home, it could offload schools if we are under these tight restrictions in the fall where we might not have the sufficient educators to follow social isolation and remote learning. Similar, where appropriate, we should be asking the community for help, not because they should be doing more, but sometimes there are people that are interested to doing more. And that can range from something as simple as we need masks for our kids or for some kids. Are there any masks that we can provide? You know, just ideas to involve the community. Asking is free. I do want to thank all of the staff, the committee members and teachers for all the hard work you're doing. This is a very hard time, and it's a no-win game, I'm sure. And so with that, thank you.
Thank you. And I keep saying your name incorrectly. I'm so sorry. It's Tasto, but I got that now. So thank you very much for your comment. Thank you, everybody, for submitting your comments this evening. I'm sure I speak for many of us when I say that we share your concerns about remote learning, and we are hopeful that with the reopening committee, which is, I'm going to actually, if it's okay with the board, switch things just a little bit and maybe move right into the reopening committee. Dr. Brand wanted to share just a few slides that he shared with the opening committee this afternoon. And I thought it might be helpful for all of us to have a chance to view those, but also for the public and those who are still here to see the direction we are moving in and how we are trying to be really proactive as we head into the fall. So if that's okay with the board, I would just like to move the, sort of that COVID-19 update, but actually move right into the reopening advisory group. Dr. Brand?
Sure, thank you.
We'll uh, screen share, I'll try to do so now.
Thank you.
Uh, can you see that okay?
That looks great. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Um, so this uh, presentation uh, has been, I think, and if not, it will be added to the school committee packet. And certainly, uh, we will make sure that it's posted and available for the community to review. I did, um, as Ms. Bryson just said, I, I did uh, meet with the um, reopening committee uh, earlier today uh, in which we launched uh, the important work that will um, obviously help guide us towards reopening uh, in the fall. And so I thought that it might be uh, helpful uh, to just take a couple of minutes to share with the school committee as well as the uh, as a broader community. Um, so I'll, I'll go through this um, uh, much more quickly than I did this, this afternoon with the full committee, but um, I just draw attention to a couple of things that I, I do think uh, represents this time period. Um, and, and certainly one around the necessary uh, the necessity and need to be adaptable and as flexible as we can be moving forward, that um, all of the information that is floating around out there is pointing to is pointing to the fact that we may have to adjust on the fly. Um, and the word continuing is certainly being used, and that's the word that I, I used uh, earlier today when I, when I met with the members of the committee, that this plan um, is not going to have to, is not going to be able to be linear, but it's going to have to be flexible and multi, multifaceted to try and best meet our needs, some of which we may be unclear about right now. Um, I think that some of the comments uh, a few moments ago captured this and that's not number two. Um, and, and I'll talk about the DESI guidance in a moment, but I think even with that guidance, I, I think most would agree. Um, I, I tend to think that there is no one clear path forward. Uh, certainly, just as there was no clear path um, this spring. Uh, I think that even with the uh, benefit of time and space, um, that there's not going to be a, a simplistic plan that takes us in one one singular direction, that we are going to have to be prepared and multi, multifaceted, as I mentioned. And I, and I also think that, you know, perhaps this is touching upon uh, also some of the previous comments around taking stock of the opportunities that we've had in these last few months and um, realizing that um, perhaps not intended when the last school year started. There may be things that we may wish to pursue, um, COVID nineteen related or not, that might be a benefit for us as an organization going forward. So, um, the Mass- Massachusetts, the DESI Department of Elementary and Second, Secondary Education, as I think many know. It is uh, guidance that we do not have yet. But it is the understanding and the expectation that the guidance for, the initial guidance for reopening of our school systems uh, will be forthcoming tomorrow. There's been a bit of a delay and so I, I suppose it's possible that that may also occur, but it's with great anticipation that uh, I know many have, that we will have this initial guidance to be able to work with. Um, but in the absence of that guidance right now, um, what seems pretty clear, and, and this is part of the discussions more locally, but equally so from uh, the work that has a- already started in many other states around the country. Um, and that is that um, there's a strong likelihood that is leaning towards the possibility of re- returning to school in person in the fall. Um, there's also the possibility that there may, may need to be shifts along the way. Uh, a term that's, I'm seeing used a lot is the hybrid format, which uh, by and large, I would suggest would, would speak to school, some some aspect of the student population and or staff in session while others may not be, depending on the health conditions. And then um, the, the other end of the, the continuum would be full, fully remote learning. Uh, if school closures were again prompted. Um, and uh, the final piece is that, um, of which we did not have uh, in the spring, and, and I know this to be true and I know this well. Uh, we didn't have the opportunity to be more planful um, and thoughtful around how to uh, best uh, establish a path forward. Um, and, and that we, we certainly do, and that we also will have with the ability to incorporate more uh, more folks in, in this planning. I think that there were some fundamental assumptions as we sit here today that I shared with the committee uh, earlier and, and that's obviously that we are going to be responsible for shaping our plan around the guidelines put forth by the state, uh, both from the public health standpoint as well as Department of Ed. Um, we will have obviously local context of consideration and working with um, a lo- local board of health, for example. But I, I, I can expect, we should expect that these Department of Ed guidelines will be more prescriptive than they have been in the recent past, uh, with, I, I think likely expectations that school districts will need to more closely comply with. I mentioned the continuum piece, bullet number three. Um, and um, that, that also that this work of this committee, I see most certainly overarching the district as a whole. But as I also shared with the group earlier today, it's not lost upon me that there will need to be revisions or adaptations at each school level uh, because of some of those needs there. So it's going to be a truly all hands on deck uh, necessity. I think that there are some, a lot of priorities that frame this work, but I would suggest that at least the three. Uh, obviously, the health and well being uh, that um, we can establish in place uh, for our, our learning environments is, is critical. Um, we obviously need to attend to supporting the education of our students, the teaching and learning component. Um, and then that piece of being uh, flexible and adaptable and having plans in place for as much as we can try and plan for, not knowing the immediate future going forward. Uh, I've mentioned this before, just, but just briefly to recap. Um, there are eight focus groups, at least right now, uh, that um, have been enlisted to try and help support the planning for our school reopening. I've divided them into two sort of subsections, if you will, operations in the left hand of the screen. And then um, instructional programs and services on the, uh, on the right side of the screen. So way too many names to list here, uh, but these names are included in the packet. I'll, I'll talk to this, um, these names, sorry, as a whole are included in the school committee packet as well. Uh, but a huge thanks for the uh, extensive interest by so many of our W P S staff. I think we are far, I think we are far north of forty now, um, all told. Um, and as well, uh, we have almost twenty uh, parent guardian representatives with close to sixty uh, who had expressed their interest. I just want to pause on that point um, and not only extend my thanks to the almost sixty members of our community as well who expressed their interest, but um, obviously there had to be a, a limit uh, to try and make these uh, subcommittees manageable. And so the effort to try and uh, identify and ultimately select parent guardians that represented um, all three levels, elementary, middle and high school levels, as well as both sides of town. Um, there is representation from, uh, from, from both sides of town to, to try and make sure that there was some degree of balance. As you can see, we have a host of staff representing every school across the district with many multiple staff. Um, we also have uh, representation from the town, including um, Shelley Newhouse and George Cooper uh, as, as the two primary to point out. So you can see very quickly, and, and again, for, for those that might be interested, the full uh, complement of these uh, listing, this listing is rather in the school committee packet. Um, I'm, I'm just gonna uh, breeze through the next couple of slides in the interest of time. Um, this is a very draft timeline and, and I, I realize uh, that, and as I shared with the the group earlier today, that this might need to be adjusted. There's a lot of um, things that I think are unknown right now. Um, for example, uh, it's quite possible that the Department of Education guidance might require us to submit something to them. Again, I'm, I'm uncertain about that because we don't have the plan, uh, the guidance in place. Um, but that's a possibility. And so if that is the case, some aspects of this plan may need to be adjusted. But I think more importantly, the point that we have a huge group of volunteers here who, um, who were asking to come together in the summer to work and and that's going to take time and this work is going to take time. And um, we, we are getting started now. We could start it today. Again, obviously in the absence of this guidance, which would have been ideal to have, but we don't. Um, but I, but I do think that it's going to take a, a good amount of time and investment of hours for folks to, to identify a preliminary plan. So it's also trying to coordinate this with um, right now, the, the tentative school committee meetings um, that I see is obviously an important update to the community. Um, I know that those could be adjusted as necessary and, and perhaps they need to be, but um, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to see. And then obviously getting this plan together to vet it, uh, to make sure that it's sound. And then make sure that we can roll it out to our staff as a whole and to the school community, um, so that people know it. So this is very draft. Uh, the deliverables of our work, just a couple more uh, slides here. Um, as I, as I see it, I, I think that there are some key topics, uh, issues, questions, if you will, that pertain to all of these eight areas and then some that I think need to be looked at through the lens of students, our staff and our families. Um, I, this work I see as, as cultivating deliverables, for lack of a better word, that in some cases uh, will be a plan, in some cases might be guidelines, in some cases might be protocols, uh, depending on the particular area of fo- focus. Obviously, with the, the intersection of all of them in terms of creating our path or our framework for, for reopening. Um, and, and obviously this last piece that, this is work that is done by or approximately sixty, but on the, on, um, on behalf of almost five hundred staff and, and thousands of, of families. And so this work obviously will take great shape and importance going forward. The uh, just a couple more points here and for those that may have, may be poking around out there, it's, it's quick to see that some other states have already their, their reopening guidance outlined and there's some good plans and these are just a couple. I'm sure that there's, there's dozens more out there. Um, I won't spend the time right now to dig into these. There's, there's eight more slides though, but I'll just pause to use this as, as an example. Um, as an effort to try and frame the thinking, at least the initial thinking for these groups. And that is, um, you know, what are the target areas that have to be addressed? And I absolutely um, am, I'm thrilled that we have so much participation in this because I think, you know, when you bring together obviously a group of, uh, of individuals, there'll be the cultivation of different thoughts and ideas, many of which probably haven't even, we haven't even thought about yet. So this is just a beginning. I'll just show one more as an example, uh, as a, as a starting point, if you will, um, that I encourage the working groups to, to use and go from there. Um, and I expect, we should expect that these lists will grow, but I think that that's good because it will help uh, try and ensure that we've attended to as many elements as possible. Health and food services, you know, at, at first this might seem straightforward enough, but as you start to think a little bit more about at a deeper level, some of these, um, there's, there's more to them. And I would anticipate these represent some of the things that are on people's mind, on many people's minds, um, along with many others. So, uh, again, I'll, I'll leave it at that, uh, but I thought that this would be interesting for the school committee members to see and of course, our community. And again, we will make this presentation available and probably include it as part of the COVID nineteen uh, update. I'll pause there if there are any questions um, from members of the community.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Can you not unshare your screen?
I'm sorry.
I can't see everybody. I can't see if anyone has questions, but now I can. Um, Mrs. Burns.
Thank you. Um, I know this is um, just at the beginning stages, but uh, in looking at the, the plans um, with regards to food and uh, as it pertains to protocols with regards to where lunches are had. And I'm sure you, you'll touch upon this, but I, I just want to ensure that children with food allergies and or chemical allergies are considered in those protocols. Um, if we have to do um, hybrid or um, or if we are able to get into the schools themselves, but um, just a couple of points to, to consider as those subgroups de- develop um, and discuss that um, going forth, going forth.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Burns. Any other questions or comments on this particular presentation? Okay. Seeing none. Dr. Brand, you, would you like to just finish the COVID update and then we'll move back to the Walker report? You're on mute.
Sorry.
Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Um, I will. Uh, this, um, I just wanted to take a, a couple of moments and uh, address the, the second item. Uh, real, uh, the parent guardian reopening survey results. Uh, just um, to continue on uh, some of the points that were mentioned. Also a few minutes ago, uh, the um, uh, this presentation is not up yet, but it will be. It's not, it's not extensive. It's not too long, but I just wanted to take a couple of minutes if I may to just sort of uh, bring into focus that, the survey. Um, it, uh, it, it is the case of numerous districts, we, we know in the, in the area conducted at some point. Um, some earlier in the spring, to be fair, some multiple times uh, from my conversation with colleagues uh, over the last few months, uh, reached out to their respective communities and or staff to try and gather information that would be um, obviously helpful and informative to uh, to, to moving along uh, the journey that was in, in the spring. Uh, for us, because we, we did not uh, administer a survey of um, of our constituents. Uh, the decision um, was uh, this one time outreach effort uh, with, with intention to try and sort of take a look in the, in the rearview mirror uh, to the degree that um, that's helpful and insightful for planning for the future. Um, and, and so that's uh, that, that's where the motivation for this survey originated. Uh, we, we gathered together examples of surveys. Some of them were uh, duplicates, quite honestly, that were floating around, out around, uh, around communities. And that's what we utilize as sort of the basis to, to start. There, there were some communities that administer administered surveys that we saw in a range of literally thirty questions. We were, we wanted to try and keep it more straightforward and, and and, and something that would hopefully have uh, more of an inclination to lead to a, to a response rate. Uh, in all total, we had five hundred and thirty eight responses to, to the survey. Um, there were, you know, broadly speaking, in terms of themes or a few key areas that were, were explored, reflections upon remote learning. Um, trying to better understand what families are thinking about in terms of return to school in the fall. Um, and um, and of course, that the, the central piece to this, and that is uh, even though remote learning for the spring and the school year is behind us, it's part of this planning around going forward of the possibility that remote learning again might be upon us. And if it is to be, uh, what can we learn from the past to improve um, our, our service to students and families going forward in the future? So there's just a, a couple of slides here that try and encapsulate um, some of the key surf- survey findings from um, this, this administration. Um, first off, uh, trying to probe whether or not families would send their children to school again, uh, if we were to reopen uh, for in person, obviously, or uh, in person um, uh, learning. Eighty seven percent of respondents said that they would likely send their children to school uh, in the fall. This is a big area for us, as you know, a, a very heavily used and relied upon program, the CARES program. Uh, as you can see, there's, there's a high level of interest and, and uh, demand for that program, if indeed it's, it's uh, it's something that we can offer and, and provide structure for. And in terms of the school buses, this is also a question that is uh, being circulated around out there, uh, with some concern that maybe if school is open, parents and guardians may send their, their children to school, but maybe not on a school bus. And obviously, as you might imagine, that has implications for us. So we thought it interesting to explore what that might look like. Uh, overall, families were, uh, were disappointed with uh, remote learning that was provided in, in the spring. Uh, they, the central and primary focus, um, understandably uh, centered around uh, the academic preparedness of students for their return to school. And um, a- and, and also around the uh, connections uh, with uh, with teachers as well as classmates um, throughout the course of, of the last uh, number of months. And if remote learning has to be in place going forward in the future, you know, again, there is uh, the element not only of the academic and personal connections, but the social emotional support. And um, what can that perhaps best look like to try and, and, and meet those needs, at least needs that our parents and guardians saw? And, and what, what can our district do better to, to implement learning at home? And so you can see there's a, a few, a number of bullets that accompany this specific area. Sixty eight percent of respondents requested clarification around uh, the learning tasks and units. Specific feedback was a, a component that there was uh, some, uh, some interest in pointing to, to try and, and help guide learning at home i- if it has to be remotely. Uh, I think that's the, around the challenges that uh, many parents uh, and guardians felt in trying to best support their child. About half of the respondents uh, were, felt challenged in terms of what, what, knowing what their, their children were supposed to be learning. And um, nearly one in three families were, were detecting patterns in how they were learning, but they were just not sure on how to support them. And this is pretty consistent, um, from what I, I've been seeing and hearing and reading and other uh, places far beyond Wilmington in terms of um, some of far beyond Wilmington in terms of some of the challenges that were experienced by families and how that can convert into, again, sort of a, a return to this if necessary in the future. There, there certainly, certainly was feedback that, that parents pointed to in terms of ownership of their children's learning in the past. And certainly a recognition of the effort by so many of our staff to support the social emotional aspect of, of their children's experience. There is a quest for children with individual education plans or IEPs for how best to try and support some of those needs at home. And then just an exploration of devices. This has been a concern by, I think, everyone that I've heard about in terms of how best to do that. And, and again, as you know, I think the total was somewhere around 300 Chromebooks that through Mr. Lord and his technology or staff loaned to families at the elementary level to help support them. Just a couple of summary points that I just feel took the opportunity to make. And, and that is, has been said throughout time and time again. The spring was a challenge for, as best as I can tell and as best as I can glean through conversations and, and, and information that's out there, not just for Wilmington Public Schools, but, but more importantly, educators throughout the country. It's also clear that some were perhaps better prepared to flip to remote learning. I'm sorry with the typo there, but it's, it's also the case, and that's not, that's not just in Wilmington. That, that's also, I would say, everywhere. What I see and what I've been reading, as I'm sure many of you might be as well too, is, is that everybody struggled in some way with remote learning for, for a variety of reasons. And although I, I haven't seen in-depth research out there, we, I've seen, again, as many of you might have too, research to try to, to gather together information from different perspectives. And there certainly were positives, and we, we know that, and we've heard that from, from many of our staff as well too. But there was also the reality of the challenges, and that held true for parents and guardians at home. And I put myself as a, as a parent in that, in that camp, in as much as, as a staff member as well too, trying to do this work. And finally, the intent of the survey was really rooted at trying to gather information that would again be helpful for our forward thinking. And, and certainly not in the least of trying to, to lay, to lay blame or, or criticism. This was tough, this was tough for everybody. Finally, we know, I know well, that there are a huge range of questions around the upcoming school year. And that it's going to be important to attend to a number of things, and that is obviously health and wellbeing. This is a health crisis, but also it's, it's a crisis of some proportion around planning for education, especially if we have to adapt and adjust on the fly again because of the circumstances. The, the information, you know, that if you design a good survey, and there's always the ability to reflect upon how some aspects of it may ideally change if to do it again. But there's information that I think can be helpful for our reopening committee and, and our school leaders and our staff to, to think ahead again, should we need to be back here for remote learning. And I think finally, the piece that I've also touched upon in the reopening work, and that's, there's, I don't think going to be one solution or plan that's going to work for everybody. However, it's my hope, it's my expectation, and it's, and it's my confidence that our advisory committee will really allow us to do three things. Make sure we have a plan in place that adheres to and follows the local guidelines and the state guidelines around health and health and wellbeing, follows the DESI guidance for school districts that we are obligated to do, and is also again, provides that flexibility that we need to go forward. So again, this PowerPoint's not posted, but I will make sure that it will become part of our online documents as well too, if people are interested. The full survey results are available also on the district website. With all of that, I'll pause if there are any questions from the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Raxdale?
I think that, you know, seeing some of the results is both, you know, a little hard to take, but also not at all surprising that what we were all asked to do, families and teachers and administrators, to, you know, take an education system that is 100% based on in-person instruction, and then suddenly with essentially no notice, convert it into a remote learning system, that there was just, you know, it's, it's more or less kind of asking the impossible for that to, you know, work smoothly. And especially when the guidance of what was supposed to be even being done kept changing. When we first went out of schools, it was just supposed to be enrichment. And then it had, then it was supposed to be learning, but no new content being taught and just focusing on what was already taught. And then finally, new content keeps to be taught. So we're, you know, we keep shifting what our goals and intentions even are. And, you know, we, we have to look back at the past and, you know, focus on with planning that now we can take this information and, you know, not build the airplane while it's in flight and try to make sure that if remote learning is necessary in the fall, and I think there's a very high likelihood that some amount of remote learning will end up being in the mix, that we, you know, we take this information, we learn from it, and, and we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. And I, I would echo everything David just said, and also to point out that teaching is, is a profession that our teachers spend a really long time preparing for and then honing their craft. And it is, it's, it's hard when suddenly parents are being expected to do something that they think maybe should have been easier, and they're realizing there's really so much that goes into the craft of teaching. And I think that, so not to say that parents were expecting it to be easy, but it was certainly harder. And I think with the delay in the guidance and then the constant shifting of the guidance really put us at a disadvantage to, I mean, I remember as a parent in the beginning, I was sort of like, okay, I'll just design some stuff myself. And then all of a sudden, I'm like, oh, wait, now there's going to be stuff to log on to. So even as families, I think we were shifting what had to be done at home, week by week by week. And I can only imagine how difficult that was for, for the teachers in the, in the classrooms to be told, no, you can't, no, you shouldn't do this, wait, you should do this, oh, and now you have to do. So I think 100% we are doing the best we can to be proactive and to think really carefully about what this is going to look like for the, for the fall. And I think gathering as much information as we can is, is helpful. Are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Brand? Okay. So, Dr. Brand, that covers the COVID-19 update?
It, it does. The DESI reopening guidance is listed there. When this agenda was put forth, it was with the full expectation that we'd have it. We don't yet, so, but obviously, as soon as we get it, we will bring attention to it.
Great. So I'm going to move back to item seven, old business. The Walker report survey results update.
Sure, thank you. If I may, I'll ask Alice to, she's here with us. The, I'll turn this over to her in just a moment, but in your packet, there is, there is the survey results from the Walker report. You'll recall that this, the Walker report, as, as it's been referred to, was the direction that our district opted to pursue in terms of a self-study, if you will, of our programs and services broadly connected with student support services. It's not something that we had to do, but we felt for a number of reasons that it would be important to bring in a third party to help assist us to take a, a more in-depth view of the state of the state, if you will, in terms of the programs and services within that. It was realized after that report was, when near the end of that report was concluded that the parent guardian survey opportunity did not get pushed out to parents. And so we did do that. The survey results were finalized and returned to us. And you may have seen this on a previous agenda, and, and you're not seeing double if that's true because it actually was listed on the March agenda, the meeting that we ended up canceling because schools were closed with, for COVID-19. And in the scheme of everything, quite frankly, we, we just didn't get back to it. But the commitment has always been there to bring these results to the committee and to the community. And so that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing this evening. We didn't want the school year to end without that. So with that as the backdrop, I'll ask Alice to take it here, and she's going to screen share.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Still a strange experience, kind of seeing everybody on little tiny pictures. I just wanted to kind of remind everybody why we did the Walker report as part of the coordinated program review. And in November of last year, Brian and I went through kind of all the different components of the Walker report that were recommendations that were made, and just gave an update to the committee about kind of where we stood in each of those recommendations. So I actually took that memo from the fall, and I turned it into a PowerPoint. So you could, they line up kind of, the wording and terminology is exactly the same, but it gives you an update. And so that's what I'm about to screen share in a second, if Tristan, is good for me to go ahead and do that. I know she has to give me permission.
You should be all set, Alice.
Yep, I got it. Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We good? All right. I gotta get you guys off the screen. Hold on one second. All right. So what I did with the PowerPoint was break it down into the different focus areas, if you remember that the Walker report covered. And so my thought was to just briefly kind of go through each one. And if anybody has any questions, I can either pause after each focus area was my thought. If that makes sense, Jen, if you'd like me to do that, or would you like me to go through the whole thing? It's only four slides.
If it's okay, it's actually a little easier to go through the whole thing, Alice. And then if the school committee members can just drop their, their questions. That way, it's just easier once you're not screen sharing, if that's okay.
Sure, sounds good. So the focus area number one, if everybody remembers, was the high rate of eligibility for students on an IEP. And then they made a number of recommendations. The first centered around our IST process, the concern being essentially that it was inconsistent in each building, the referral process for which students that are struggling or parents for whom have concerns can bring to a team within each, each building. And that team works to support the students, providing interventions in place prior to a student be, being referred for special education. It is a required component of all general education schools. And all buildings have a IST, and the other districts, it might be called the T S, T A T team or a pre-referral team. In our district, there is, has been a lot of consistency in terms of not only the makeup of those teams, but also the consistency with which they meet, the participants on those team, the paperwork around what's, what's utilized on those teams, as well as the kinds of staff or specialists that might participate in brainstorming from those teams. So the recommendation from Walker was that we really take a look at making some more consistency around those teams. And it is also part of our strategic plan. The IST has a number of components that fall under our strategic plan. So in November, we really kind of were at the beginning of this work during the course of this year. Even with the COVID closure, a number of leaders in the district were able to complete the DESI MTSS Leadership Institute, which we had put in for and were accepted into. We were one of only about 60 districts that got into that during the state last year. Part of that was looking at planning for professional development in things that might be related to IST, such as UDL training, you know, supporting administrators and how to create IST teams. We also, if, if everyone remembers, were part of the Inclusive Practices Institute this year, and they actually overlapped well, given that we were working on inclusive practices and working towards more inclusive practices in the district, as well as looking to kind of strengthen our IST teams. And when you look at things like UDL, they actually work really well together for both of those areas. We did have a, a very clear professional development plan for Leadership Institute this summer, as well as kind of falling into our November Professional Development Day. And I would say up and through March 12th, we were all set. I think, you know, some of that is going to be, I'm assuming, Dr. Brand, that a lot of that is going to be kind of being looked at, depending on what the needs might be for professional development, depending on the circumstances for school, whether there's additional remote learning or other things. But there is, we already have kind of the topics, we have a speaker for November. And so there's a, a good opportunity there to, to continue the work going into next year. Paperwork has been worked on, will probably be all set by the beginning of school. The teams have still met less consistently, but kind of via Zoom. And then I think that long-term, while I know that the, you know, the strategic plan goal is going through 2022, I think the IST process is something that has to have kind of constant monitoring and evolution and evaluation of the team as teams change, schools change, curriculums change, the specialists you have in buildings, such as rating specialists or coaches, that evolve kind of as schools evolve. So I, I do think that the IST process isn't something you can just, you know, kind of create a manual and move on and have some expectations. There needs to be, it needs to be kind of an evolving process as schools evolve. So I think it will span past 2022, but obviously, as part of the district initiative, that, that was kind of the envy. The 504 procedural manual and kind of the awareness of who the 504 coordinators are in each building was something that came up as a weakness in the report with staff oftentimes reporting that they didn't have any idea who in their building was the 504 coordinator. So that has been updated on the website. The 504 procedural manual was expected to be completed in the spring, which it was. We have not rolled that out to staff for some of the obvious reasons. We need to do some in-person training around with the 504 coordinators in each building to look at that manual. It was updated also utilizing our legal department, just to make sure it's all current because it had been actually quite a while since that had happened. So once I think we get back in person or things settle down a bit and, and everybody kind of has a little bit more of a routine, we'll be able, even if we have to do some of that training via Zoom, we could do that. The next one that falls under high rate of eligibility is the, looking at our D cap. A lot of staff in the, you know, interviews and focus groups that were done through Walker reported that they did not either utilize or know that we had a consistent D cap. And together with, you know, the MTSS Institute that we, that we kind of went through, the idea of moving forward all inclusive practices, the D cap is a big piece of that. They all kind of fit together, knowing what you can utilize for students, how to accommodate students across the curriculum, not just inside special ed, and making sure the teachers have the supports to do that are really key. A big piece of that is professional development, making sure that teachers have the skills. So it's one thing to talk about some of these on paper, accommodation on paper. It's another thing to make sure that everybody has the, the skills to be able to implement these accommodations that are listed for all students. So that is going to be a focus and has been planning to be a focus. Again, I don't, I think we haven't really determined yet to what impact the need first, because of us, the COVID closure might have on, on some of these PD initiatives that we're going to span the whole year. So I think some of that still needs to be worked out. Obviously, we have some of that scheduled, some speakers and some professional development already scheduled for the November day. And we have agenda items for our summer institute. I would suspect, given the circumstances, some of it would need to be scaled back a bit at this point. Let me just turn the page. Oh, there's a lot here. It's a little smaller than I thought it was on my screen earlier. Okay. Focus area number two is the programming and services in the district. The first that they asked us to do, which we created kind of mini groups to do, was to update program descriptions across the district. To be honest with you, this got put on hold. So we had begun some of this work. We can, we're going to finish it over the summer, but there was definitely not going to be the amount of people we were looking to kind of join these groups just because of the closure. This was one thing that, that got pushed down a little bit in terms of the list of important items that we had to deal with in the last couple of months. So that will be completed. It just is going to be pushed out a little longer than I anticipated. PBIS, the lack of consistency with PBIS and the SEL groups to support students' social emotional learning, whether it's through a PBIS structure or a tiered intervention structure, was something that prior to last year was very inconsistent in the district. So we had some schools, as you know, originally when the PBIS initiative came to the district, there was, half the town was essentially, you know, initially started the coaching through an agency with the anticipation of the second half kind of falling suit the following year or partway through the following year. through an agency with the anticipation of the second half kind of falling suit the following year or partway through the following year. And because of change in leadership and, you know, other priorities obviously coming to the surface, there was some schools that moved way ahead of others and some that just didn't kind of adopt the PBIS initiative. At this point, all the schools have either an SEL or a PBIS team that are looking at all of their practices. If you walk into almost any of our schools, you see either the core values or you see the, in some schools, the pause or the recognition systems that exist. People, some of the schools are still in different places in part because they started in different places. But most of our elementary schools are really similarly, they're within kind of a year of each other or so. I think there's a couple that may be a little lagging behind just because of starting late, but all are kind of working towards that PBIS structure. The high school and middle school, you know, one, they typically are the, the kind of second tier, so to speak, in a district that adopts PBIS. But they both have functioning teams and are working on SEL practices in both, both buildings, which is great to hear. So they're in different places with coaching. There are some teams that are up and running and very independent and, you know, have minimal coaching at this point. That might be a monthly. We have some that are twice, twice a month, some that at points in the year might be weekly to support them moving through an initiative that, that's connected to their team. But everybody's up and running in terms of having a team, which is great. The language-based programming, the middle school, we had PD planned actually for the spring, which has been put on hold. There was no way with part of that PD was going to be coaching. And at this point, we did have to put that on hold. So trying to figure out depending on budget, because it's going to be a budget impact with everything happening and whether the grants are affected, how that will look come the fall. So at the moment, that is a little bit on hold. The learning center staffing at the middle school, we had added as part of the FY21 budget process, an additional special education teacher. And we, you know, at this point are just kind of awaiting regarding final decisions for FY21 budget, but that was still the plan. Our ABA programs, life skills programs specifically at the high school level. The feedback on that was, was kind of unusual because they talked about there not being kind of consistency in the use of the ACE curriculum. We had a number of ABA programs, staff change over in the last two years. And so the model in terms of the high school has been clarified. There was a staff change last summer, which impacted, I think, the clarity around the program. All staff in all of our ABA programs utilize the ACE curriculum, which is through New England Center for Children. It's a great, great program for helping them develop students' goals and objectives as well as collecting data for students. So all pre-K through 12, that program is utilized in all of our ABA classrooms. As of at least this moment, all of our staff is returning to all those programs. I, I get afraid to say that out loud, which is great because we have some great people in the programs. And we do have a new BCBA that was hired to support the programs for next year. The other recommendation in this area fell under looking at professional development for administrators relating to SEL, UDL, supporting students with behavior needs or challenges related to students with disabilities inside buildings. Really more for our school-based administrators looking at PD. So we had, again, some of that planned for the summer. Some of it will be, I'm sure incorporated, continue to be incorporated into the summer institute that we have. We had some days scheduled with our attorney to also support kind of the legal piece of supporting students with disabilities inside the schools as well as the UDL trainings that we talked about, the inclusive practices trainings. We had a lot of our building-based administrators actually participate in both of those institutes, the MTSS and the Inclusive Practices Institute. So, you know, I think it's now, given the closure, working out kind of the timeline for that professional development. The intention for the November day was to actually do kind of separate sessions for some of the administrators around UDL as well as supporting students with challenging needs as well as kind of the legal needs. So as, and then having kind of a flip part of the day where the speaker actually spoke to, some of the speakers actually spoke directly to teachers and have a revolving, you know, options for, for the professional development day. They're, not all the speakers were acquired for November, but a number of kind of the focus areas were identified. So it's just a matter of making sure that we can stick to that plan or if we need to adjust based on the closure and the reopening of school. The other noted area was that the evaluators from Walker felt like there was an overreliance on paraprofessional support. There was a DESI guidance that had come out in, I think of over a year ago. Last spring, we actually rolled that out to building-based special ed staff as well as all the administrators in the, the buildings. We did it again this fall at all of the, the special education department meetings as well as the administrators participated in that, giving them kind of the options of, you know, when you would go to what is considered a fairly restrictive support of adding an additional person or an adult to a student. What are the data, types of data you need to take a look at in order to add a support like that? And then how to develop fading plans for students, because the goal of any IEP is to maximize independence for students long-term. And making sure that people understand that, you know, it's something that has to constantly be reassessed, but you have to work towards building that student's skills in the area so that they don't have, become an overreliant on an adult to have all their needs met. We want to maximize students' independence. So that will continue to be an ongoing conversation. I also think that the addition of some of the other support staff that were proposed, things like, you know, there were other things that were proposed into the budget like social work support, the middle school, like an additional BCBA also provides the support to teachers to make sure that they can support students more fully too and brainstorm better kind of the needs of those students. So I think they're all tied together. Need for paraprofessional support, our staff professional development as well as, you know, specific key positions in the district. The last is organizational oversight. This is probably the easiest. They talked a little bit about increasing administrative oversight in special ed. That was completed by the addition of LeAnn Ebert's position. The second is to add a team chair position and reconfigure. I think, as you'll note also in the, the Walker parent survey results, there is some lack of understanding around kind of the team chairperson's roles. And that's in part because we, there is inconsistency at each building in terms of what a team chairperson is responsible for. The main reason for that is just not having enough people to support all of the students in the district. So for example, at one building, you might have a team chair running only meetings for students that are in programs, given the volume of cases. In another building, they might be able to run all of them. It simply comes down to just caseload. We have four team chairs for eight schools and all the out-of-districts. The out-of-districts alone essentially would be more than enough for one person. And then we have a couple of team chairs that have more than three schools. They have three schools plus out-of-districts. So it's purely a caseload situation as well as the other roles of the other specialists. So for example, if a school has a school psychologist, that school psychologist might run some meetings as well as the team chairperson. Where in another building, they might not have a school psychologist and that person might not run the meetings the same way. So there's an inconsistency in terms of roles in the district. We are working on that. We did put as part of the budget process an additional team chair. Again, we're waiting kind of final decisions around the FY21 budget. The last one was looking at just collaboration and kind of the feedback on this one came from that inconsistency of building administrators sometimes feeling like they need more support to evaluate these highly specialized program teachers. But there really hasn't been a mechanism to do that in the district because most of the time the staff in those programs report directly to the building principal. This year, we moved towards for non-professional teaching staff, special education, myself or LeAnn, the coordinator of special education, being able to support the principals in supporting those teachers with the intention of trying to expand that outside of non-professional status teachers if we need to. So that, you know, you have certainly the principal who is evaluating, but we give kind of the special ed lens and viewpoint to support the teacher, giving feedback that might be program-specific or more related to the kind of program that they're running that might not necessarily be in an area of comfort for a building-based principal. So I'll stop there as my thought before I go into the survey, if that makes sense and see if anybody has any questions.
That sounds great. Thank you very much, Alice.
You want me to un-screen share?
I, I know. Is that a word? I know.
Yeah. On, there we go. Hold on one second.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments for Alice, Mrs. Burns?
I just want to say that I, I do have questions, but I prefer to wait until after she addresses the parent survey to ask them because they may be answered at that point and, but I'd just like to kind of place marker is all.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Other questions or comments about what Alice has presented thus far? Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make the comment that, I mean, this is really, we're talking, you know, this is a really comprehensive change to special education in Wilmington. And this is, this is a huge, huge, huge undertaking. And I just want to thank everybody who's put any bit of time into this. Because this is, when you look at, you know, at each of those individual things, this is a lot, 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 lot of work. So I just want to thank all those people. It really looks like, you know, I'm, I'm really happy that the Walker report was done and the findings. We're actually, you know, making strides to, you know, to correcting some of the, some of the pitfalls. So I just think this is, this is excellent and I'm just, and I'm really excited to see where the work goes. And hopefully COVID stuff hasn't derailed it much, too much.
Thank you. I honestly, I, I can't take all credit for it. So this has been a team effort. There's, you know, an MTSS group. There's an inclusive practices group that's made up of teachers, other district administrators, assistant principals that have, you know, just taken on the work of, of trying to subgroup some of it just so it wasn't just overwhelming on our office. And because people had an interest in, in, in investment in making a difference long-term. So I think, and I should be more prepared to list all those people. So I apologize, but, but they've been a huge help. So I think, you know, we have some work to do. I think COVID definitely stopped the train a little bit right out of the gate for the first month or so. I feel like we, we needed to kind of focus on what our expectations were from DESI, which were a constant evolving experience for the first month or so. But I think we have some opportunities also over the summer as well to pick some of that back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Newhouse?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Jay was just saying. I think first, you know, thank you for doing the Walker report to begin with and bringing the results forward as you have and the extensive work that's been going into it. You know, this isn't going to be something that's going to be fixed overnight. And it's, it's great to see all the work that is going into it because it's not only helping our students, it's helping the staff and administration as well to better support everybody. So thank you for doing all the work and your team for everything that you're doing.
I appreciate it. I think, you know, the Walker report was a, a great experience because I think it, they recognized pretty quickly that we needed to look outside of just special ed, which was the original intent was to look at programming. And so once they expanded that, I felt like it really gave us the opportunity to look at kind of all those structures that may eventually lead towards special ed, but eventually we'll support all students if we can get them in line. So I appreciate that. Want me to jump on the survey?
Yeah, is that okay? Yeah, I'm not seeing any other hands just yet. So that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just going to preface this by saying they did not give me the survey in a PowerPoint format. They gave it to us in document format, so it was impossible for me to, at least I couldn't figure out how to copy it out. So I apologize for having to scroll through the document as we talk to look at the graphs, if that's okay. Okay. Can see it, right? Okay. So there was, again, the, the questions went out. They were also posted on, they went out via Blackboard as well as were posted on our website for quite a while. There were, they asked eight questions. Some of them were essentially agree, disagree, needs improvement. They kind of gave ratings to. And then there were three that were open-ended. So I'll show you the graphs on the first five and then the following three. Look at, you know, open, kind of an open-ended feedback, which they just summarized into paragraph format. So we can talk a little bit about that, but they are similar. So I think the maximum amount of survey results that got to any question was 126. There were some questions that had less than that. There are about 640 students with IEPs in the district. So there were, for example, this question is the first one, just looks at a breakdown of the, the grade level that the student was. This one had about 114 responses. There were some that had more responses, 126 responses. So some questions were not answered by all, it appears. So it looks just based on this as a good chunk of them ended up being middle school and high school parents. There was definitely representation from all levels in the district to some degree. So that was good to see. Then the next one talks about placement. And so again, most of our students are in inclusive settings. More, actually more responded that their student was inclusion than we actually have in the district. So of the respondents, a good chunk of the parents, about 67% of them were students of, were parents of students in inclusion. But we did have representation from, at a district as well as individuals in sub-separate programs as well in the district. And the, the questions were really just kind of looking at, at the placement here. The next one is how, excuse me, sorry. Looks at strongly agreed, agreed, neutral, disagreed, or strongly disagreed. And the responses are presented here, which looks at how would you rate the programs available to students with disabilities? And so I'm going to scroll down just a little bit to show you that. So again, looking at the programming available and programs available to students with disabilities. A lot of the parents feel like the programs that are available need improvement or are poor comparatively. We have opened a lot of programs in the last three years in the district and we are certainly still working on alignment of those programs because there was definitely a lack of alignment, I think, in prior years. But we have ABA programs pre-K through 12. We have social, emotional programs pre-K through 12. We have language-based programs, elementary through high school. And there are some programs that exist at certain levels that don't at others in part just based on need in the district. So for example, we have two strands of social, emotional programs in the district at the elementary level. One is much younger than the other. And so some are for behavioral issues. One is more for students that have anxiety-based issues and working on separating those more consistently. At the middle school this year was the first year that those students moved up, coming from the two strands and working to make sure that the programs stay as much as possible separated. And at the high school level, we have the staffing to do that. Although the name is one, which is evolution. So we're working on kind of the renaming of programs district-wide as well as just the clarification at the secondary level that we do have the program all the way through. It just is at this moment called different things. We worked this year to just rename our ABA classrooms from, used to be called Compass, Pathways, and Strides. It is Strides pre-K through 12 now, all of our students, our programming for students at ABA. So people get attached to names and I totally understand that. So we're working to kind of do it in a way that people feel like it's a slow transition over. The next question is how would you rate the alignment of district programs that students move K through 12? And this is similar to the kind of the information we just talked about. The responses are also similar. I think the names have complicated. The change in names from, from building to building or level to level over the years has complicated things. As an example, going from Compass at the pre-K level and an ABA classroom to what might be called Pathways at the elementary level, I think people naturally did not think the programming was the same when in fact it was. That's not to say that there's not work that needs to be done in this area and certainly work around the awareness of parents and staff, to be clear, around the programming. So that is something that we are working on, did work on last year, will continue to work on going forward. Question four was similar. The results are very similar. How would you rate the communication and collaboration between families and staff? Again, my concern being here, just, you know, we want families to feel supported and certainly don't want, you know, people to feel as though the communication and certainly the collaboration between special education staff or staff in general and families is poor. You know, not always do people always agree, but there certainly should be the feeling that, you know, certainly staff and teachers certainly have the best interest of students. you know, certainly staff and teachers certainly have the best interest of students at heart, so. I think we, you know, have some room to grow there. The next is how would you rate academic services related to students with disabilities? Again, similar, feeling like you need, there is a real area for improvement here. And, you know, some of the feedback kind of later on in the the survey results talks about needing to be clarification around reading services, access to more providers and ABA support in the district, which is certainly was an addition, proposed addition to the budget for this year. And so I, I do think that there's room for improvement for people to feel that from level to level, students are receiving the same amount of support from building to building. I think our transitions also complicate this by not necessarily having the exact same staff from building to building. You might go from a building that has a school psychologist to one that has a school counselor and there doesn't always have this, people don't necessarily think those roles are the same. So I, I think that there's definitely room for improvement here. The fifth question that was, that has a rating is how would you rate the social emotional behavioral supports available to students with disabilities? And again, I think, you know, majority of respondents felt like there needed to be improvement or that the social emotional supports that are available to students with disabilities is very poor. We do have, you know, either school psychologists or counselors at every level. We did make a proposal to add an additional one at the, the middle school for this upcoming year to support students' needs. I think that we're in a place and time where making this adjustment for all staff to be able to support students' social emotional needs is something that you were in that balance point where sometimes students' needs are exceeding the district's capacity to support such. So I think, you know, we still are in a, having to assess whether we require long-term more supports and personnel potentially around this area as well as professional development for staff to ensure that they feel like they have the skills to, to support students' social emotional needs inside the classroom setting as well. The next couple of questions were open-ended and if you look at most of the responses, I would say that they centered around a number of things relating to looking for clarification around roles. So between liaisons and team chairs and understanding kind of what people are responsible for from a paperwork point of view. Making sure that there's more social emotional learning integrated into all of the curriculum and all of the service providers in the district, both special ed and regular ed. Making sure that they have the skills to support those students. Communication came up a number of times, communication between gen ed teachers, between special ed teachers, between Office of Student Support and the personnel that work on specific cases there. And that just needed to be worked on. And then the last one was just open-ending, open-ended, looking at concerns that you might have. Areas of bullying, executive functioning came up, supporting students with dyslexia, supporting students on 504 plans as well. So I think it, a lot of this runs the gamut of some of what was also found in the Walker report as well as has been incorporated into our strategic plan. SEL is a huge component of our strategic plan. And having all teachers and staff to be able to get the skills to be able to support students from an SEL point of view, I think is a huge focus of the district over the next couple of years, so. I can't say, I mean, I was disappointed with the results. I can't say that those areas aren't things that we knew were areas of weakness in terms of SEL programming, program alignment has been something that we've been working on also over the last couple of years, but. I'll pause there, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Alice. Your questions or comments? Mrs. Burns?
Thank you, and Alice, I know that when you started with us in district, you, you took on a lot to begin with. And I, I, again, I'll echo that of my colleagues previously that the amount of work going in and, and shaping this and the work going forth, professional development is, it is essential. And I'm hoping that even in a remote way, we could push that out to our staff, you know, to, to make some progress. It might not be as ideal if we weren't in a panemetic climate, but it, you know, that's the situation. And I, again, with Dr. Brand, I, I know that you said with the Walker report, it wasn't what, that we didn't have to do it, but but I do have to say it was very much needed and I think without it, and I appreciate you bringing that in and, and it's not easy to have your whole special education program evaluated and see the ugly truths that reside and, you know, a lot of things, you know, can be fixed, but I know as Alice said, there are a lot of things that are gonna take time. So in saying that, my question is sort of twofold, Alice and Dr. Brand, if you can kind of assist. Knowing that, you know, it's a work in progress and that this report did not encompass a COVID, a COVID panemetic-like climate. Can you just share, and I'm not looking for details, I'm just looking, if you can just give us some examples of how are we going to meet the needs of our kids on IEPs and their services in a remote, in a remote learning environment if in fact we are unable to get back into the classroom and/or not have any hands-on abilities? I just didn't know what kind of like out-of-the-box kind of thinking have you guys, have you been considering? I'm sure it's a part of the advisory group over the summer, but I, I really, you know, it's, it's critical that we try to find a way to mitigate this in some capacity. You know, so that we have a strong foundation going forth. I'd be interested, Alice, in whatever thoughts you may have on that process with what we've learned from the spring and, you know, and going into what your hopes are for the fall with regards to meeting some of those difficulties that some things you can't meet, but, but I'd be interested in hearing what you, what your thoughts are.
So I, I think one of the challenges we had, aside from the, just the obvious challenges, one of the challenges that we had was the, and, and not that he is doing this intentionally, but there was certainly a ever-evolving guidance, what appeared to be between kind of the week after we closed till about the end of April. So there would oftentimes be something issued and then I think the US Department of Education would change direction potentially, they would have to, we would have to retract it. So my hope is that if, you know, certainly we're going forward into remote learning, that, that kind of the, the things that are the expectations now for students with disabilities don't kind of become upheveled as we go into the summer and potentially in the fall. So if we end up in a remote learning environment, that the expectations stay similar to what they are now, that we don't have this back and forth, which is what I think created a lot of difficulties in the spring. I think that we have to take a look at being creative. I think we had some amazing special educators and honestly, I, I want to thank Dr. Brand, the central office leadership team and all of the principals for being able to be creative in what was at one point seemed like a weekly, ongoing, weekly kind of different changing expectations for students with special ed education plans regarding what the expectations were. So kind of re-meeting, rebooting, looking at those expectations, having building leaders do everything from plans out to students' houses, bringing devices, communication devices, packets of information, books and such. You know, to, you know, having constant brainstorming sessions with their staff around how to do this and how to do it well. And I think there's a lot that came out of it. I think that you have staff that were able to kind of collaborate and look at other practices of other service providers that they may not have met with during the school year. So people in similar programmings collaborating around how to best meet a student's needs rather than them working in their own silos. I think going forward, the way to make sure that we are supporting our students is sharing those resources. And I also think we need to look at the time, the face-to-face time that we're having with students. I think while some students struggled with that, there were some students for whom potentially individualizing the amount of virtual learning would have been key. And I think our providers did that in the most creative way that they possibly could. I think the other big piece is materials, it was probably a weakness. I think we were immediately in a position where we didn't have any prep time to be able to really give materials to families, right? I mean, there was certainly a Chromebook pushout, which I think was phenomenal, but I think if we had some more notice around us being able to move towards remote learning and move towards having to provide supplemental materials and students to work on some of this at home, if we had the opportunity to provide those students all of the materials potentially that they needed. Because we had enough prep time to do it, I think it might have looked different as well. I also think some of what the remote learning looks like is going to depend on our guidance. So are we talking complete remote learning or limited in-person interactions? I think that will also change the dynamic for a lot of our students who would benefit from some face-to-face if that becomes an option. But I think that there were technology and resources that perhaps we as a district weren't using that now people have found to be extremely helpful and that will forever change their practice. So I think, not to stop talking so Dr. Brand can jump in, but I think some of it is going to be based on the guidance and some of it is going to be if we're provided the opportunity to have those two materials, to prep them in time, to make sure students have what they need at home, to be able to manage the remote learning and then looking at having enough prep time to be able to individually support those students. So for one student, a Zoom might not be something that's functional for whatever reason, it might be too much for them to be able to manage and thinking creatively about how to support that student compared to another student for whom really would benefit from more virtual learning.
I'll just add if I could, I'm sorry, just two other things and one. What Alice hasn't really mentioned perhaps, but you know, she is very active and very involved in collaborating with her colleagues. And I, you know, a firm believer in, in always trying to learn from, from others and as much as we talked about what we can learn and benefit from from the last few months and then collectively with a little bit more time and space planned for our reopening. Alice Meets and, and I know this is committed to collaborating with her colleagues and I think this is an example where that can be a benefit for our practices. She's very closely connected to the collaborative in particular, which I, I think that they have a deep sense of collaboration, which is great. The other piece I'll just mention, and just to put another plug-in for it is the piece of the reopening committee and the specific focus on access and equity. And, you know, we have obviously the teaching and learning component, but there's also, it's clear and growing clearer by, by sort of the day, thinking about providing access and equity in, in a way that helps serve all of our students and that might be in the schoolhouse? Because there are a whole host of challenges that are starting to, I think, surface when we think about the safety aspect for what it means for some of our providers or what it might mean as much as obviously remote. So I don't know that we have necessarily all of the answers, but I do think, as much as Alice touched upon, there's lots that we can harness to think about how best to try and improve what we can do in the fall.
Well, I mean, taking into consideration, you know, this is an unprecedented, unprecedented situation, especially how it looks in the special education realm. It's, I guess, I'd be interested in hoping that, you know, as you plan for the fall and hopefully getting into the school buildings in some capacity, and I know it's a lot of work. I mean, creating it from ground zero is, is certainly not easy. I mean, I know that what you said about Alice, that the federal government hasn't been, it's, is evolving and it's still fluid and I expect it to be fluid. But it's, it's the push-out services and the supports, like whether counseling, if those counseling sessions, whether it be remotely, still take place and it's those things that support that academic piece. Which I think is going to be the, one of the, one of the biggest tasks in trying to recreate in a virtual setting because you just, it just, it's not the same. It's, um, it's those kind of, I mean, that in itself, along with the professional development, a two big, I think, one of the two biggest problem-solving things I think you have on your shoulders and I, I know, you know, it's, 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 you know, you'll, I'll know, we'll work towards it, but I'm hoping that we can try to find those, again, out-of-the-box ways to support those students who receive those other, other services that support their learning in a virtual way and making sure, you know, it's not to say it's not, I'm just saying it, it's consistent in that schedule, you know, it all rolls out constructively in, in the fall, so. You know, we can start making that progress and, I mean, with the Walker report, I mean, we didn't, you're focusing on the programs and now that's kind of outside of that, you know, we're on a whole different, you know, planet when it comes to how, how are we going to deliver education and services in a remote world, so. But I commend you and I know it's, it's not in, it's certainly underestimated the amount of time that is involved that you've undertaken with your team to, to start working on that, but I, I, I just, it's something that I think I'm hoping to see and I know it's not going to be, it's going to be evolving and it'll ever be in ebb and flow, but I would like, you know, I, I'm hoping to see creative ideas coming out for the fall with regards to those areas that are, you know, we, we need to try to support as best as we can, but. But and I thank you for your time and all your effort and everything you're doing, it's greatly appreciated. I don't want to forget that, because I, I don't, you know.
I'll give you an example if, if that's something that's okay. So our, our summer school started this Monday. As you know, you know, the ban on in-person services continues until the end of June with the, you know, so the summer guidance has changed a little bit. Originally, three weeks ago, we were told plan for remote with the possibility of August in person. Two weeks ago, we were told plan for remote with the possibility of possibly after the middle of July. We're looking at some in-person services, about two weeks ago, we were told plan for remote, but work towards in-person services and you have to essentially do a, a regular assessment of the district in order to kind of get there. And so we have our programs again started on Monday. We have done a couple of Zoom, a number of Zoom meetings with all of the staff to talk about what everybody is doing, right? So I think that that dialogue of, not that the stress level is certainly not high, it is, and I think just being in this environment creates its own stress, but I think we're in a different place where people having done some of this for, this work for a number of months now. And so you have people that are doing like on top of their regular programming, they're doing enrichment activities and they're offering that to other classes. They're doing STEM activities via Zoom for some of the, the special education summer school students. You know, they're doing cooking classes and things that are now working across multiple programs that might not have happened a month or two ago. So I think people have gotten to the place where, one, they're more comfortable with the technology and they have also accessed a lot of the resources that exist out there and are kind of starting to share that and be creative about how to make sure that, you know, students that, you know, do have self-care and personal hygiene as part of their plans are receiving support around that potentially in the summer via Zoom. But in a unique way that maybe we wouldn't have even thought of three or four months ago. So I think we're on the cusp of being a little bit more creative. I think the collaboration amongst the staff has improved, meaning people that wouldn't have necessarily interacted at all because they might have been in the same program in a different building have been able to do that more consistently and particularly since Monday, I see a lot of that going on. So I think a lot of the ideas that people are sharing are, are great and will be carried into the fall and potentially after, even once we're back in school. It gives the opportunity for doing something long-term, too.
That's great, thank you so very much, Alice, much appreciated.
No, no problem.
Other questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Samaha?
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to, I will comment and one question, I'll, I'll try to keep it quick too. The, you know, seeing that, that, you know, most of those questions, it was around 60% was either needs improvement or very poor. That was really disturbing, I think, to me to see that. But I also think it's, it's also pretty brave to sort of be able to say, we need to do this work. You know, so I think, you know, I, I think of most of the respondents being in inclusive settings and you think about the steps that are being taken with the D cap, the MTSS, the PBIS, you know, UDL, like that's going to have a huge impact because that's going to be helping, you know, kids with with disabilities who are learning alongside, you know, you know, students in, in general. So I guess my, my question is, is this a survey that can be implemented like next year so we can sort of gauge how it's, how we're improving?
Interestingly enough, CPAC was going to do, and Mrs. Newhouse might be able to speak to this from a couple of years ago, there was a survey done through CPAC that they were going to repeat this spring. It just didn't happen, honestly, with the closure, because I was in support of that, I think it would be, you know, good, bad, and ugly to get that data and I think it's important to see whether A, things have changed, B, what are the areas that you need to improve on? And so, you know, while it's certainly not easy to sit and talk about some of this data, it's the only way that things move forward, so. That didn't happen, honestly, as a result of the closure, but that was the, the plan. We could certainly move towards doing something like that, but I, I, and I don't mean to speak for CPAC, but I think that they wanted to continue that because they had started that, I don't know if they did it, Mrs. Newhouse, once or twice before I don't know if they did it, Mrs. Newhouse, once or twice before the survey that was done. I know it had been done just prior to me coming on board.
The one that we did two years ago, we did one prior to that, but it was a lot different questions. And I know they were, I don't know if they were gonna run the same survey again this time around or I know we had talked about running it and there were definitely a lot of the same questions of what just came out in the Walker report, so you would have gotten a lot of the same information. You know, and maybe where CPAC didn't get to run it this year, maybe we can incorporate or reword some of the questions so we get some of the same feedback that the Walker report just gave us. So we have better data to compare and, you know, can see where we need to move forward and improve still. But yeah, I think none of the parent input surprised me. You know, I think a lot of the areas of places that we knew we needed to look at and are places that you have on your action items anyways. So, yes, so, you know, the report, the questionnaire surveys in the past haven't always been consistent. So, you know, hopefully, you know, maybe next year would be, we can actually get it up and running and incorporate the two and get some good data to compare.
I thought the CPAC survey was actually a little more detailed, so.
It was, yeah.
Great, but I think it was limited in terms of the questions, so.
I wanna say the CPAC survey had like 20 questions.
So yeah, I have no objection to doing that. I think it would be good information.
I had a similar question, Alice. Could we do this survey annually? It was one of my questions, so I'm glad to hear that that might be a possibility. My other question was about, and you mentioned this in the summer programming, and I know that there may be moves to doing some of that in-person. Do you think we could use some of that summer programming time to experiment with some of the in-person? As we prepare for the fall, if we experiment with some of it during summer programming, may prove to be really helpful for our students. Do you see any of that happening this summer?
So, you know, much like, you know, the kind of the expectations was we start remote. So that has been the plan, also in part because our summer school started Monday. And so we really couldn't do anything before July. What we're planning to do and have done is do, I actually received a kind of a checklist of everything that would have to be in place before we could consider in-person programming. And so that assessment we did this week for, let's say, next week, awaiting there being further guidance. So when the next guidance comes out, which my understanding is should be this week for both fall and summer, because the summer guidance that was out was really based on a limited amount of information that they gave us. At this point, we don't have some of the necessary things to open. Let's say if we were to do it Monday or if we're able to do it Monday, we could not do that. So with the next round of guidance, which I'm assuming will be out this week, Mr. Rogério, myself and a couple of other people are planning to kind of review the checklist again to see kind of where we fall. So I mean, it covers things like, you know, ensuring certainly social distancing and protocols for cleaning and things like that, but also staff space per classroom, making sure we have necessary staff personnel. So it kind of goes deeper than just looking at, the other piece to that would obviously be some kind of agreement, I'm assuming with WTA, which is another component of that or, you know, kind of having some agreement around people returning to the buildings. I don't know what that would look like. But regarding kind of the things that we can control immediately, the checklist looks at, do we have those things in place? And so if the guidance comes out tomorrow and changes, we'll change the checklist again and do the assessment based on the new guidance. So my plan honestly is to kind of review that on a weekly basis during the summer. Then when we get to the place and everything's in place, then we can certainly look at the criteria for summer school. For in-person summer programs at this point would be, it would be limited. It's only limited to students that would have programming that has multiple service providers, meaning they may have a program plus OT and PT and speech and that have some kind of component that spans most of a school day, like ABA services. And then you have to factor in students that have medical needs. So there's some other criteria we have to take a look at. Students that just receive tutoring at this point, based on the current guidance, I don't, can't tell you if that changes tomorrow, but based on the current guidance are not eligible for in-person services or have just a related service provider and not eligible with the current guidance that exists. So the plan would be, or the hope would be to get towards some in-person services. I think there's a lot of steps that have to be taken, I think. I will tell you, talked about kind of me working with SEEM. We meet fairly regularly, almost weekly at this point, since we've closed when I can, when we can make it. All of the districts connected to SEEM are at this point starting remote and essentially utilizing the same kind of criteria to move towards looking at in-person services, up and including SEEM, is remote as well.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I am hopeful that we can do some in-person services before the summer. So thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? I don't think so. All right. Thank you very much, Alice. We really appreciate you being here to present.
Thank you.
All right. I think now we are new business 8B, which is recycling of surplus equipment. So there is a memo. Dr. Brand, do you want to just talk us through?
Sure, I will. There is a memo in your packet for 8B Recycling of Surplus Equipment from Mr. Lord. And that memo you'll see there outlines the information, oh, sorry, the equipment under OIT that has been collected and rightly should be recycled. I won't read each of those, but you can see the overview there. This is consistent with policy for surplus declaration. And so as such, we're looking for a motion to, for you to declare the list that is mentioned here as surplus for the purpose of recycling.
Is there a motion? Mr. Bjork? Are you gonna read it or?
Sorry, I'll make that motion. I didn't have, I don't have the form up. Give me one second. Okay, here it is. All right, I move to declare the included list of equipment as surplus for the purpose of recycling. The list being 150 monitors, 45 desktops, 10 printers, 12 projectors, five network equipment, six DVD slash VHS players, three TVs, one fax machine, miscellaneous cables, and 125 thin client terminals.
Is there a second? Mr. Fenely, any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. All right, item 8C, we have Wilmington High School Student Handbook. This is a first read. Dr. Brand?
Sure, this is here for you, Linda is with us. I hope she is. There she is. And she is here for the purposes of delivering to you the first read of the handbook. As I've mentioned previously, this is, this is a prime example of something that's being, that has been rather, sorry, somewhat delayed, just given the totality of the circumstances. But nevertheless, this is still important to come before you as the, as the school committee to ultimately approve pertaining to, obviously, students at the high school for next year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Linda to just provide any highlights around changes going forward.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Our changes are very minor, based on the fact that we really didn't have a lot of time to really go through some of the revisions that we really wanted to do this year. So it's on hold till next year. But we did change our mission statement and expectations for learning since we're now in the process of our accreditation and working with our core values and the vision of the graduate. So we did replace that page with our core values and with our vision of the graduate work. We also added, which was a policy that was approved earlier this year, separate from the handbook. We out, but we did include it in our handbook, the policy on electronic device use in the locker rooms and bathrooms. So we added that statement that, from the policy that was presented and approved earlier this year. We also updated our MCAS and competency determination requirements that are based on some of the new D E C guidelines, based on the fact that we missed our MCAS testing for our sophomores and also for our freshmen. Those are listed based on a memo that indicates that we will be testing our juniors. Hopefully, the schedule right now is possibly in the winter. And we are going to test our sophomores when they are juniors. So our testing schedule will be a little different next year and the competency determination has changed a little bit based on the science testing, which indicates that if a student hasn't taken a science test yet and passed, that they will be considered meeting the competency determination based on a successful completion in relevant high school science schools. Those are all the updates that we managed this year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peters. Are there questions or comments? Mr. Raxdale?
I had a question about the device in locker rooms and bathrooms policy. Wilmington in general has a fairly liberal electronic device policy that, you know, students can have their devices and use them as long as they're not disruptive and the, you know, the classroom teachers have control over how they, or if they get used at all in class. So I just wanted to know how this is seen as playing out. And if students have their devices with them and they are literally not allowed to enter, you know, a bathroom or a locker room without them, what is the expectation that they have to put them away in their lockers, leave them outside with friends? What are, what are we expecting them to do? There seems to be a small conflict between the general liberality of cell phones in which we don't expect them to necessarily be locked away or kept in lockers during the day and this policy.
Well, they are collected before they go into the locker rooms for gym classes and the coaches also don't allow them in the locker rooms. As far as the bathrooms, they shouldn't be taking a phone with them if they're leaving class to use the bathroom. During the passing time, they do have them on them. It's just a matter that they don't use them. It's pretty hard to enforce since we cannot be in all of the bathrooms to enforce that policy. But if they're caught with it, then it's confiscated. And I mean, using it, we're not gonna search them, that they have it on them. They should have it on them if they're going from class to class.
Okay, other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. So thank you very much, Ms. Peters. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Have a good summer.
Thank you. You, too.
Thank you. Our next item of new business is 8D, MASC Resolutions on COVID-19 Expenses and Response to Social, Economic, and Racial Justice in Our Communities. And I'm gonna actually pass this to MJ Burns.
Thank you. As you'll see, the leadership board of MASC came out with their own resolutions. As you recall from our last meeting, we, you did allow me to share, to pass on the resolution that I brought before you from other school committee members that were, I should say, were created in conjunction by a group of school committee members from various communities as it pertains to COVID-19 expenses and it being unfunded mandate. Starting there, I wanted to share that it did go out to all parties. Governor Baker, Secretary of Education, Pfizer, Senator Tar, House Representative Robertson and Representative Gordon, the Senate President Karen Spilka and the House Speaker Robert DeLeo, as well as the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. So I did, I did get a response from Dr., excuse me, doctor, my day jobs, forgive me, from Representative Ken Gordon, and, which was very nice. He said he's, he will be taking up that, the charge on the House floor with regards to funding COVID-19 expenses for our schools. So that's, that was a good response. I, and I apologize to the board. I have yet to follow up with Senator Tar and Representative Robertson's offices with regards to it. I haven't received any responses at this juncture, which is not surprising considering where they currently are in talking about the fiscal budget of this year. But I didn't know before, I did notice that this resolution looked a little thinner than what we had voted on. So I didn't know if anybody had any questions or concerns at this juncture. It's a little, much shorter than what was voted on and I submitted on our behalf. Any concerns from anybody? Can I take that as a no? Moving on?
No concerns.
Okay, very good. So let's go right into the additional resolution that MASC leadership, I should say, the board leadership put out. And this is an updated resolution to school committee anti-racism resolution. So, and I'll read the where it be resolved, that the, and I ask again, for the board's approval, I'd be more than happy to send it out, I would like to send it out from our board to the same leadership that I had sent the COVID-19 resolution to. This pertains to, let it be resolved, the Wilmington School District and all the school districts in the Commonwealth must guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded in practice for our students, families, faculty, and staff. We must ensure our own school culture and that of every district in the Commonwealth is anti-racist, that acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matter. So in saying that, I would like to open it up for discussion and suggestions. Again, this was the resolution brought forth from the MASC leadership, leadership, the president, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mrs. Burns. And I'll, I'll just start. I am very much in favor of this resolution and I think it is, I don't, I love the way it's worded and I think it's on point. And I think as, I know as a committee member, that I would very much like to show my commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion in our district. Are there other comments or questions about this resolution? Mr. Samaha?
Hi, yeah. So, you know, I, too, I'm 100% behind this. I think this is a really good, I think this would be a very important, strong move for, for us as a committee to make if we approve this. But I, I think, I mean, as I read through it, it really, it really calls for some tough thinking around what Wilmington does in terms of its curriculum, in terms of its hiring practices. You know, I, I think that, you know, it's, there's, there's, there's a lot here. And I, and I think we need to use this time, you know, this, this time in history to really move the district forward in terms of, of being, you know, an anti-racist district that's gonna, you know, value and include everybody. You know, and I don't know how, so, so one of the things calls for the eradication of racist practices. And so my question, I guess, would be is, has the district ever really looked at what our practices are through an anti-racist lens? And what would that mean and what would that entail? I don't expect an answer to that, but I think that's something that I think that we really need to be thinking about. I need, I'm also curious about, you know, what does Wilmington do to recruit diverse and culturally responsive teachers? Like what are we, what are we doing? You know, so, you know, I'm curious about, you know, a lot of things. So I, I think that this resolution is very, very important, but I know for myself as a But I know for myself as a committee member is, I'm going to, can, you know, if, if we pass this, I'm gonna be, be pushing for a lot of this stuff to, to, you know, to be followed and not just, you know, sign off on something and then say, you know, don't, don't we feel good that we did something, that we did the right thing? That, that we're, I'm gonna, you know, we need to be held to this if we do pass it. You know, and, and, and I just, I'm 100% behind this and, and I think that if we do pass it, that we need to, this is going to be, you know, some very, very hard work. You know, I, I love Wilmington, but, you know, I, I, I think that Wilmington hasn't always been the most inclusive place. And I think we need to acknowledge that and, and work towards, you know, eradicating practices that we might not even know are, are racist. So with that, I'll, I'll end, but I'm 100% behind this.
Thank you, Mr. Smaha. Mr. Fenely? Can't hear you.
Sorry, I lost my mouse and I couldn't find my mute button. I'm inclined to, to agree and to support this. I think, I think Jay brings up some, some valid points and, and certainly some things that, that we need to look at if, if we support this and if we move forward. And, and I support this as well. I'll be clear with that upfront. But the only part of this that gives me the slightest pause is a lot of these whereas sections start with every district, every district, every district. And I know that this came down from sort of the M A S C, but I don't know that we are in the place to be speaking for all school districts across the state, right? I, I agree with this resolution as, you know, as it's written for Wilmington and for this, this committee. But I just, I'm just a little concerned with those every district wordings in there. But I think this is great and I'm glad to see it brought forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenely. Mrs. Burns, do you want to address that?
If you don't mind, D E S I, I think what, and I don't know if this will help that and, and I get it because in reading it, sort of, it's sort of different than any resolution that I usually have read. We're lending our voices to school districts of the Commonwealth as it pertains to this issue. And, you know, as it pertains to there be resolved, Wilmington is lending the voice that all districts, we're one body of educating institutions coming together to say, hey, these are the practices that we are going, going to uphold each other and ourselves too. And that's just, I think that's how I interpret it. We're lending our voices to the, to the, I mean, again, to the state legislature as to how public education, public schools in Massachusetts need to commit, to provide for, for their students, you know, and, you know, especially their, you know, their, their Black students and then in the myriad of adversities that they've encountered that we that we may, you know, again, I don't want to say white privilege, but that we may not be aware of per se. It's lending our voices to the, to the group of public schools within the Commonwealth on this. And break, you know, it's letting, it's one voice, I guess, for what I'm trying to say. And I'm not articulating so well tonight because I know I'm struggling to process my thoughts. But I don't know if that helps or hinders, D E S I, but I was hoping to try to explain that better.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. It looks like it's good. Thanks, Mr. Fenely. Other questions or comments? Okay, so do we, we've already done the COVID-19. Do we take a vote on this, Ms. Burns?
I'd like to, just so that, that there is a record that all members agree that as a collective board to send these on to the state leadership and state leaders of the Commonwealth.
Yep.
So I would like to entertain a motion that the Wilmington School Committee submit, allow me to submit on their behalf, the School Committee Anti-Racism Resolution written by M A S C to send to our state leaders. And if the board will allow me to advocate on behalf of its members to the individual, our individual representatives to ensure that this gets time on their respective floors.
I'll second that. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
And that includes Mr. Fenely too.
All right. Our final item under new business is the F Y twenty superintendent evaluation. And it says, Dr. Brand, are you presenting this, Dr. Brand? I'm just joking. Your name is listed there first. All right, so I'm going to just pull this up. And of course, there is a evaluation subcommittee made up of Mr. Smaha, Mrs. Newhouse, and myself. Everyone completed their own individual evaluation. We met via Zoom to look through all of the ratings and narratives. And then this is the final product of that, basically the averages. So we would look at it and say, okay, there were this many here, this many here. So that's where we, where we landed. So I will, you've all seen it, I'm not going to walk through all of it, but you'll see that we assessed in standards one through four, Dr. Brand as proficient. I can't see anybody right now, so I'm just going to keep going, but please sit, please stop me if you want to say something. And then we also evaluated the goals. And so the student learning goal, we rated as significant progress. Professional practice goal was also significant progress. District improvement goal one was met. District improvement goal two was met. District improvement goal three was some progress. That was the development of a template and format that will allow the compilation of district information to be disseminated to the school community annually and become an annual report. So I'm sure that will be something that will continue into next year. Not, am I good? Can I keep going? Okay.
Yep.
We, not everyone provided narratives in each of the standards. And so we decided as a team that Dr. Brand will obviously have access to all of the individual evaluations. We decided as a team, we would actually not include those narratives in the, in each individual standard. And not everybody evaluated each of the indicators. Some most actually only evaluated those that aligned with the goals, which was what Dorothy Presser suggested we do and said we could do that. So as a committee, we decided that we would only evaluate the focus indicator. Is that clear? Are there any questions about that? Okay. All right. So, and then you can walk through there and you'll see for under instructional leadership, one B was proficient. So the overall rating and instructional leadership was proficient. And that is how we came up with those summative results at the top. Any questions or comments so far? Subcommittee, am I doing okay or do you want to jump in? You're okay? Okay. Oh, I thought that was a one minute, actually, like, oh, actually, no. All right. And then for the overall summative, the evaluator comments, we sort of just tried our very best to pull from everyone's evaluation in, in a way that would make it sound like, oh, thank you, Jay, that was good, thank you. In a way that would make it sound like one complete report for Dr. Brand. And so I, would you like me to read that? Yes, no, yeah, I'm gonna, okay, I'm going to.
I think so.
Okay, I'll read that. I just have to get very close to my computer. Dr. Brand continues to prove himself a dedicated instructional and fiscal leader. His collaborative, thoughtful, and engaging approach to his work is consistently evident. He regularly demonstrates strong interpersonal, written, and verbal communication in his memos, emails, presentations at school committee meetings, and other community events. Dr. Brand has been present at school events across the district, and his commitment to high expectations for the district is apparent in all of his communication. His collaborative approach makes good use of the talents of the team members he has assembled around him, from the central office staff to the principals, C T Ls, and his extended leadership team. In addition, he's shown remarkable leadership during the COVID-19 pandemic and school closure. Dr. Brand and his team spent considerable time over the summer of 2019 developing action items and evaluation metrics to the implementation of the five-year strategic plan. As we began the year, parts of the strategic plan started to move forward, such as exploring town support for new school construction or renovation, forming the school start time committee, attending the M T S S Institute to improve the I S T process and other interventions, and reorganizing the Student Support Services Office. Much time was devoted to reflecting on and responding to the findings of the Walker Report. Further highlights for our district have included submission to the M S B A of six SOIs for improvements, upgrades, replacements of school buildings in the district, the hiring of a new athletic director, assistant superintendent, West Intermediate Principal, and passage of the Student Opportunity Act at the state level. Dr. Brand worked collaboratively with the school committee and town entities to address school building conditions across the district and develop a short, mid, and long-term plan for attending to the physical conditions of our schools. This included identifying an alternative physical location for the staff within the Department of Support Services. Due to COVID-19, the district had to pivot from in-person instruction to at-home enrichment activities and remote learning focused on existing content and skills. And finally, remote learning focused on new content and skills, those most important for success in the next grade. Dr. Brand has shown remarkable leadership during the school closure. He worked tirelessly with the administration and teachers' union to establish M O As during each phase of the closure, implemented a food distribution program, and ensured that devices were distributed to families so that all children could participate in remote learning. These are situations that superintendents have never faced before. Dr. Brand remained positive and focused on students' educational and social emotional well-being. The COVID-19 pandemic and the implementation of remote learning has created an unprecedented set of circumstances in education. In order to appropriately and adequately evaluate Dr. Brand, we've examined his performance through that lens. An overall summative rating of proficient accurately describes Dr. Brand's performance when considering his professional practice goals, student learning goals, district improvement goals, and the indicators he identified based on the standards. All right. Questions or comments? Anything you'd like to add? Mr. Raxdale?
Hi, could you talk just a little bit more? I, you said that the, that you didn't include narrative in the four standards because not everyone on the committee submitted narrative, submitted comments in those categories. Can you talk a little bit more about how you came to that decision?
Sure. So not everyone, the ratings there were kind of not, I wouldn't say all over the place, but some people did everything, some people did a few, and few people did narratives there. And so we decided that it might be best to include narrative in that large section. And some of that narrative in the large section, we actually pulled from people's individual sections to create sort of a more succinct overall evaluation in that area that read as, as we, as I just read it, as opposed to pulling those pieces out in each of those specific standards. Subcommittee, do you want to give any more information on that?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that in order to, in order to have this be as, as accurate as it could for, for everybody, if we had included a narrative at the bottom without everybody having a chance to have actually written something there and to be evaluating the same things, it wouldn't represent the committee as a whole. So I think that's why, really why we, we left it out. And to put it all in that one section at the top, I think, represents the committee as, as a whole.
Thanks, Mr. Smaha. Mr. Raxdale, is that okay or do you have more questions?
No, that's, that's good to hear.
Okay, Mrs. Burns.
And Mr. Raxdale raises a good question and, and I see the rationale behind the, the subcommittee. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to the decision you made. But I, I, and I understand that those narratives are optional. And the only thing that really is, is expected is the, is the narrative that you, you, you created. But I don't know, I'd be, I don't know, for those who did write their narratives, and I mean, you incorporated them in the, the larger piece. I just, you know, it's almost, you know, like, we all created our own narratives and then under those, as best as we could and what we thought was right. It's just, I, I just, I don't, I don't know, kind of, you know, it going forth maybe as a board for next year? I, I mean, again, I'm not unopposed because I can see both sides of the rationale. But I kind of, it's almost, I don't want people not to include narratives going forth in those areas and just think that the, the big narrative is the only thing that matters because other members may opt not to include it in, in those others, the, the other areas of the evaluation. It's not a biggie, it's not a, you know, because, you know, Superintendent Brand receives all of our individual evaluations. But I just think, you know, we may want to, I, I'm not, again, not opposed. I just think we may want to just think about it again this time, you know, next year because I know it's a huge undertaking to compile seven evaluations into a cohesive, well-written form. So I, I just, you know, but I, I just don't want anybody to say, well, they're not going to take it into consideration if everybody doesn't do it. I just, I don't want to, I think it's not fair to Superintendent Brand either.
I mean, I think that, so again, he'll have access to all of them. And I, I also wrote narrative in every section. I think that what was happening, what we were seeing when we were looking at it, was if we started pulling, it wasn't really representing the group as a whole because some people, and maybe we need to be more clear moving into next year's evaluation as, are we just going to, because some of us just did the focus indicators and some of us did all of them. And some of us said, well, I can't really do more than the focus indicator because I don't have enough information. And so we decide as a group, we're only doing the indicator that aligns with his goal and that's it. And if you write anything, it should only really refer to that because what was happening was someone might only check one thing, but then the narrative actually didn't just align to that. So it got messy and we were like, ooh, are we really going to write all this if it doesn't actually align to the one thing we're evaluating? So we wanted to err on the side of caution and not misrepresent other committee members. And the easiest, safest way to do that, I was to just to eliminate that narrative there because the narratives weren't really lining up even with what people had evaluated, to be quite honest. So that was the decision we made. I think that if we move, as we move forward, if we decide it actually, we want that and that makes a whole lot more sense. And I think we decide as a team, this is what it's, this is what it should look like. If that makes sense. And it was a tricky, it was a trickier evaluation, I think, than normal because of where we were sort of at the end of the, end of the academic year.
And I, and I, and I absolutely defer to the best, the judgment of the subcommittee because it is, it's not as, it's not easy to compile it and it really isn't. There's a lot of work that it's involved and a lot of consideration. So I want to thank the members of the subcommittee for, for doing it and compiling it for, on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Raxdale?
Just want to add that I, I, I do understand the, the difficulty of making sure that the comments align with the focus indicators that everyone has, that everyone has, has evaluated Dr. Brand on and that we want this to be the, you know, the work of the entire committee. But I think that the, the downside of how this is, you know, what, what we're ending up with here is it's simply a thinner evaluation. And although all of the individual comments, as you said, are available and, you know, we'll go to Dr. Brand, that the evaluation is not just, you know, for his, you know, perusal and reflection. The reason that this is done in public is because the, you know, the community gets an accounting of the performance of the superintendent. And I think that there's, you know, I think that everything that was put into the, the general summative narrative is, is a good, is a good summary. But I think that there's a lot to be said that was not able to be said this year because of, of this issue that came up.
Other questions or comments? Am I feeling that you want us to reconvene the group and add narrative to those elements? Is that? Is that a request someone would like to make?
Well, I don't know if I'm the only one, I don't know if I'm the only one who feels that way and.
Others, anybody?
Again, I said, I don't, I certainly don't mind, oh, sorry.
Okay, Dr. Brand, would you prefer to see net, those narratives written out for your own purposes? Would it be helpful to you as you look forward to next year?
Well, I think, I mean, I, those I have access to, correct, right? So I I think for the purposes of for the purposes of being able to reflect upon and and understand the perspectives and and views of the individual members, I think that that would certainly suffice from my, from my standpoint. It's obviously up to the committee as a whole and and what you please, but the opportunity to review those in 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 their totality will be meaningful to me, and and still having that opportunity is something that will still provide that same value, I think.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. All right, so let us know what you'd like us to do. I'm sure that the subcommittee is happy to reconvene and add to those, add to those areas.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the, whatever the committee thinks is is the way to go. I'm happy to look at, you know, do some more work on.
Again, it was not an issue of time or commitment to the work. It was an issue of it, we felt that it wasn't going to represent everyone's collective evaluation. That was the the hangup for us. Mr. Bjork?
I think you've made some very valid points, and especially considering the way our academic year ended. I'm, my personal take is that I'm okay with the work that you guys have done. I I personally wouldn't vote for you to reconvene.
Any other thoughts or emotion, anything?
I'm, I'm not going to move to reconsider the evaluation, but but I would like this to be something that we think about for next year.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that?
I cer- I certainly agree with that.
Okay. All right. Dr. Brand, do you have anything you'd like to say? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm fine.
All right, thank you. All right, subcommittee reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? No. So on you, in your packet, you will see the subcommittees listed. And so we won't reorganize them now, but please think for our next meeting about which committees you might like to serve on. So we have the policy subcommittee. And I'll also take a minute to just say a very big thank you to those who have served on that policy subcommittee, because they have really worked pretty diligently and tirelessly this year on doing lots of policy revision. So thank you. We have the sick bank subcommittee, superintendent evaluation subcommittee, the school committee representative to the WEF Board of Directors, school committee representative to the Wellness Advisory Committee. We have a school committee representative to CPAC. We have the executive session minutes, which is obviously called by the chair, school committee legislative representative, school committee handbook protocol. And then there'll be some contract negotiations for next year. So will we update this, Dr. Brand, for our next meeting with the new negotiations?
Uh, yes, I would suggest we should, yeah.
And then we kept that town master facilities plan committee representative. So I I think, well, I would imagine we'll hold on to that, but we can discuss that next time. Then there is the school committee, family communication, relations. And then in our recent talk of the anti racism resolution, I wondered if, and we can talk about this next time, but it just to think about maybe an equity subcommittee of some kind might be something that, the direction we want to move in. But I'm just putting that out there. We can talk about it next time as we do that reorg. Are there any questions about the subcommittees? Or anything anyone on a subcommittee would like to say about their subcommittee? To encourage others to to join or take your spot?
Jen, I'm sorry, can I, can I just go back to the last item just before you move to the the final piece, if I could? And I just, I I'm I I, when you asked if I wanted to say anything, I thought that perhaps there was going to be something more, but I just wanted to thank the members, all of you, for taking the time during what I know has been a really challenging last few months to still even complete the evaluation. Your feedback is important to me. It is, it is incredibly insightful to best understand how, as your superintendent, I can serve this community in the best way possible. So thank you for all of the work and the time upon the hours and hours of additional time that so many members of our community have not seen. But I know well that you've been putting in these last few months. I really appreciate your, your dedication to this, and and thank you for the feedback.
Any other comments on subcommittees? Okay. Correspondence? Mrs. Burns, I can't see you. I'm looking at my agenda.
None, none this evening.
I don't have any correspondence, but I did have, and I don't know if others did too. I did have some families or caregivers reach out and and just thank, and say that they actually really enjoyed the graduation. And so I just wanted to, I, just some emails and and texts. But I also wanted to just take a minute to recognize W C T V and their dedication to our town and schools at all times, but particularly during these remote times. We are deeply appreciative for their willingness to provide our virtual graduation, but more importantly, their vision and creativity in the beautiful final product. So a big thank you to W C T V. Future, oh, Mr. Raxdale?
Just a, quite a little bit along the same line of kind of, you know, thanks and appreciation. Like to just quickly thank you and Steve and MJ for serving as our officers for this past year. And in particular, thank you for being our chair during an incredibly difficult year. Never easy to be chair of the school committee under any circumstances, but certainly this was one that was particularly difficult and required a lot of finesse and patience and time, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Clearly, it's my pleasure because I'm doing it again, so.
And consenting to do it again.
No, I really, um, so, and I've said it over and over again, how just wonderful it is to work with all of you. But so committed to this work, and I really do feel so strongly that we are moving in the right direction, and I I stand by our team and our teachers and on all of you, and I hope that we can really get to where we where we need to be as we embark in the in the fall. So I thank you for trusting me and and electing me as your chair for for another memorable year, I'm sure. I also, on that same, before I mentioned the future school committee dates, I did want to say, I, some of you may have forgotten, but there was an election this past weekend. It is not the election we are, we are used to. There was no campaigning, but I would like to congratulate Steve Bjork as he begins his third term. We are grateful for your service, and I've been lucky to work with Steve as the vice chair this past year, and I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say thankful for your historical knowledge of the school committee, your thoughtful approach to thinking through really complex issues, especially ones that we faced this spring. And of course, your sense of humor and your ability to keep us grounded and in difficult times to keep us smiling. So we really do appreciate all of your service to the school committee, and we are very happy that you're back for a third term. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very, very much. I appreciate, appreciate all that. I'm not sure if congratulations or condolences is in order. But but I'm looking forward to spending more time with all of you. Thank you. And congratulations to you and a successful campaign too, Jen. We had, we had a tough campaign.
Not quite as successful as last time, though, unfortunately.
Yeah, and the total vote count, the total vote counts for us were under five hundred apiece. So I I'd almost consider that a mandate from the public.
Anyhow, our future school committee dates, we have our town meeting this Saturday at nine A M. Under a tent, I believe, over at the high school. We look forward to seeing you all there. And I'm talking to opposite school committee members, but also to the community. We really do encourage you to come out and and to be there as close to nine as you can, so that we can actually start as as close to nine as possible. July twenty second, school committee members, we have, we are going to put a regular session meeting on there at seven P M. And then we've just added those August dates, Dr. Brand. We, we're going to keep them there, just because we imagine there'll be many things coming forward from the reopening committee. So we wanted to have you just block those dates before, before it got too, before the summer got too busy. All right. And then a final thank you and best wishes to Dr. Regan as you, as you leave us near a final meeting. But thank you very much, and we wish you the best of luck. Am I missing anything, Dr. Brand? Other than I know we need to adjourn and move into executive session, but anything before that?
No, I think you covered it all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all right. So we are going to enter into executive session. Wait, do I need to, I need to do this first. We're going to enter into executive session pursuant to M G L C thirty A S twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares administrators. Roll call, sorry.
Jen, from which we won't return.
Not return, thank you. And just before I do the roll call, where is the Zoom link, Mrs. Dixie?
Looks like it's right under the motion.
It's on your agenda in your packet.
Just scroll down.
Yeah, it's right under the motion, Jen.
I know, it's not on my agenda, but I'll, I'll just have to, I'll go back into the drive. Okay, Steve Bjork?
Yes.
MJ Burns?
Yes.
Jesse Finley?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse?
Yes.
David Raxdale?
Yes.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes. All right, good night, everyone, and thank you for being here. Thank you.